I guess we will call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here on a beautiful summer day. Uh, agenda amendments? Do you have any agenda amendments?
The only thing is we'll need that.
Okay, so we are picking up the Nova classroom contract. Sorry, where's our agenda? Public comments regarding the first two agendas, do we have any public comments?
I just have two things I would like to ask. Um, one is I can't find the video from last month up on the website.
We're working on that. We didn't have the information from the Conover West folks and our new tech director, I asked him to see if he could find out how we get that made directly on our website.
Yeah, because I see you, but I do not see you.
Yeah, it's important we want to get that on there.
Yeah, because we pay for it.
Absolutely.
It's three or four days supposedly turnover and spend them up.
Yeah.
And the other thing is, on the FN, the WSU, I would like to see your picture in place of the superintendent and it's not there.
It was there. I'll have to go look.
I was just on it tonight and it's still waiting.
Well, we'll see what we can do.
It is. I checked yesterday as well.
So we need to update that.
And maybe the answering service at the central office is, the last time I called it was still Office Wynton Dibbich, so.
I changed it on my, well, we'll just.
The main.
The main one. All right, we'll have to ask you to fix.
Those are the only two things I got tonight, I think.
Well, Jim, I already knew about at least one of them, so I'm, and I'm happy to fix my fix. I can do that myself.
Superb. Maybe, I'm sorry, the only other thing is, um, for you and maybe you guys, I'm thinking about having an ag advisory meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, probably towards the end of September after school starts.
Okay.
I'm gonna send out some emails to people and I'd like to have everybody come and take our bringings.
Generics talked to me about wanting to get that done too, so she's on that super page.
I'll send them out emails.
So all of us will get that notice, right? We'll all get that. Because last year, or time said, I don't know which you got it, but I didn't get those. I am.
Great.
Nothing.
Thank you, Jim. Um, all right, next up, adopt the meetings from July 26th. So I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of July 26th, 2018's board meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Richard, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Eric. Any discussion, comments, questions?
Uh, noticing that the, um, the votes are all either, I think John Ho showed up later, so the first one was six oh, and the rest were seven oh. But if you look at the attendance, it looks like they included you as a vote as well.
That's something about that in my attention, so as a rule, the chair doesn't vote, so if, uh, so I guess that could be changed to six oh in most of the cases.
Five oh and six oh.
Five oh, the five oh is the first line here. So.
Till John comes in here.
Yeah, I looked them over, I didn't see anything.
No, there was a couple of spelling errors or something, but I think that the words were obvious.
Anything else?
Well, I did have one quick thing. At the first page of the talk, it says to adopt the policy. Uh, made the motion about to adopt the policy, it should have been to adopt the minutes.
Well.
Page, on page two, very top line.
Right, right.
It wasn't a policy, that was adopted, it was a minutes.
Okay, my.
But other than that? That, that was the only error I found.
Good catch. All right, hearing nothing else, all favor of motion to approve those minutes as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it, motion carries.
I'm going to abstain, I wasn't here, so I tried to call the minutes.
All right, so we have one extension, two, three, four, I never even did count the number I have here. Six.
Six with an O, it's gonna be five.
So it's.
It'll be four and oh and one.
Four, oh and one, yes. Thank you, thank you, glad you're here. All right. This is right into our facilities update. We don't have Paul with us this evening, so unless we want to do facilities updates under principals report, uh.
We can.
All right, we can do that. We will go with financial update, and first thing there is check warrants. And we do have one, that's check warrant report here, so I would entertain a motion uh, to approve the check warrant report, the dates July 21st, 2018 to August 10th, 2018, in the amount of $100,244.22.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Greg, by the second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Don. Uh, we did review a couple of things, John Ho had emailed in some questions and we, uh, I think the questions were satisfactorily answered. So are there any other comments or concerns with the check warrant? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it, motion carries. Let's circulate that for signatures. Did you get all those numbers?
I think so.
It's right there.
Oh, there's more ones, yes, I have one, sorry.
All right, now, also, we had, I guess I can do the, this one here next. We had a little confusion with the last, it was last, yeah, the last month's check warrant, and I guess I will read this statement here. Following approval of the June 30th warrants at the board's last meeting, the board also approved the change work orders as presented by Paul. The new voucher, 1251, was created and dated back to June 30th to include those expenses in the prior fiscal year. The voucher was created including the work slash change orders as well as a fact dated invoice for the scoreboard in the amount of $15,311.25. Since then, the additional approved, uh, the approval of the change work orders requested at the last meeting have been found, already have been made previously, and so voucher 1251 needed to be reduced by that amount and to only include the scoreboard invoice. The void report as well as original voucher invoices are attached for reference. So basically what we're saying is that the thing we have to approve is the scoreboard amount, the amount of $15,311.25. Uh, we, we approved a couple of other things twice, so it got paid and then it, uh, the check, the second check got voided, so, uh, I'm not sure if it's all in here, but.
So when Paul had come with those change orders last week, apparently those were already reflected in what Ann Marie already had, but she didn't realize it because they said change work orders on them, so she paid them, and so she voided, or she never paid it, but she issued checks and then she caught it, so she, she voided all those checks.
So I don't pay that, makes sense.
By the notice.
And the reason they're backdated is because we were trying to get those expenses into the prior fiscal year, because there was carryover to be used, the same with the scoreboard, so that's why we're using that, saying that we're charging them back.
So the voided stuff is there as back in here, so.
So the net is the scoreboard, we were really going on to scoreboard.
Right, right.
All move approved and what.
All right, so, right, so we got a motion by Don to approve the $15,311.25 for the new scoreboards for the gym, new scoreboard. Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Vicki. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it, motion carries. All right, so the next thing, next thing is the driver's ed car. Um, now, we had approved all that though, so.
You had approved borrowing for it? This is paying for it?
Okay.
We have to pay the dealership with the money that you.
All right, all right, so now we have, I guess we're gonna need a motion, yeah. Motion to approve the amount of $25,064.48 to be paid to E.J. Barret and Sons for the driver's ed car.
I thought we already. I thought we did too.
It's, does anybody have a copy of the minutes?
Was that in here?
Uh, I don't know, just.
I think it was in.
I thought we authorized the, uh. They only authorized by, like, what I said.
Well, and there's two driver's ed cars, aren't there?
Yeah, it was a second car specified.
See, you have Becky's.
They authorized either.
Becky had sent an email.
Yep, right here, August 13th, saying it was really a, not approval, it's more to say that we can add it to that check warrant amount.
Well, and I'd rather not add it to the check warrant amount because, um, I'd rather keep it separate and then it'll be in your next batch of check warrants, um, because she can't change that voucher right now, the voucher's already been closed, the checks are ready to be mailed based on your approval, so.
So what Becky recommended, you're saying, you should.
Well, it's, it's just a, um, it's a paper trail to technicality, yes, but I want it approved, but I don't want to add to that warrant specifically.
Page three, top four.
Yep.
I'm trying to find.
Board authorized, we wanted to go with the lowest bidder for the purchase of the vehicle, which was Ward, Barrett's and Swanton. Board needs to authorize the board chair to sign bill of sale and purchase agreement and any documentation. Then it's entered a motion to authorize board chair to sign all documents pertinent to the purchase of the vehicle.
So it doesn't really say we authorized to.
I thought there were two driver's ed cars.
Correct. But this was the second car.
This is the second one.
Because on bottom page three, it says driver ed vehicle purchase, then in parentheses, second, so it's gotta be the second vehicle.
I apologize, because I'm new coming into this situation, I can try to give her a call if you want, or I can see if I can get an answer before the end of the meeting.
Well, the thing is.
Oh, we haven't paid it. Bottom line is this.
We have not, we have not paid it. She just got this information, so I'm not sure how, if it was about this vehicle, I'm not sure how she would have had that at that time, because this just came out.
Okay, so, you know, I think, but I'd like to see if there's some way to explain so we can pay the rats before September meeting.
Well, right, and I think.
That's what we're asking for, just, I would include it in your voucher, we would pay it now, because I'm asking that you approve us to pay it now, but I would include it in your next actual voucher amount, because this voucher's already been closed.
Right.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Richard. Motion by Richard, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Eric. Uh, all right, so any further discussion, any questions?
They'll get their payment next week.
They will get their payment right off, yeah.
Yeah. And I don't know if we've taken delivery of the car yet, but we got.
I heard we had.
Okay.
I apologize, please be patient as we work through this transition.
Keep us honest.
Right. All right, I'll, here no more discussion, all favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it, motion carries. So we don't need it to be signed on that, we just.
No, I would take that copy back though, if I could.
All right, uh, financial report or tax anticipation line of credit?
So she brought your financial report last month, I'll bring, to the next meeting, I'll bring your, the new one for fiscal year 19, um, but the tax anticipation line of credit, I believe, um, you requested from the voters that you could go out to borrow in anticipation of taxes for the line of credit. I would just like you to authorize me to be able to gather those interest rates from local banks and award to the lowest bidder and authorize the, actually I need a board, majority of the board to sign the documents when I have them ready. Um, I may not have the, um, there's no reason to expedite that process for MVU, because you have enough in the bank right now to satisfy your payroll and all those sorts of things, but I'll do that when I need to.
We don't typically have to borrow in anticipation of taxes, do we?
Yes, we do.
We do.
I know you did last year, because I solicited the rates.
Okay, I thought the towns, did the borrowing.
No.
Okay.
No, we do our own borrowings, yeah.
Okay.
The interest.
All right, all right, so I would entertain a motion to authorize our business manager to, um, check into the interest rates and, just interest rates.
Oh, yeah.
Award a line of credit to our lowest interest rates. So, so may I make that motion?
That's the one in anticipation of taxes.
Tax anticipation line of credit.
I don't mind making the motion, but what happens if two banks come in, with two of them, there's two banks?
That, that with the exact same rate?
With the exact same rate, what happens?
Never had that happen.
I have.
Okay, um.
I mean, the thing is, right now, the rates aren't good anywhere, so it doesn't make any difference.
Well, in our line of credit, I can tell you, I solicited for other schools already and it was very low, usually.
No, it's just.
1.4%.
It's small.
So, it's a line of credit, we only borrow as we need it, and will wait as long as I possibly can to borrow, we pay it back as soon as we can, and it has a maturity date of December, so it's a very small window of time, the interest is very minimal, but the rates are very attractive. I wish we could all borrow money.
So who's the others that you're fighting? Yes, you can ask them.
Yes, yeah.
All right, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Don, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have it, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, was that all you had for us?
I believe so, yeah.
All right, any other questions for Laura, while she's in the hot seat?
How are we doing with our capital expenditures, are we getting invoices promptly?
Yes, yes, they're all being, I know they're being processed promptly, yes, Ann Marie, I met with Ann Marie today, and, um, yes, there's a bunch of them actually in this, the warrants that you just paid, a ton of those were capital project related, yeah.
All right, I guess that brings us to principals report slash facilities update.
Uh, as you've probably seen with the excavator out front, uh, the waterline project is complete, uh, they were able to turn the water on effectively yesterday, and, uh, so we were without water here for much of the day, but, um, they got it up and going, and I think by six, 6:30 last night, uh, they were able to go through, check all the water, uh, all the pressure's good, so, uh, you know, they're, they're finishing putting, putting everything back together. Um, I saw that the engineer, Tim Duff, was in just the other day taking measurements for the walkway going from the main building over to J-Pod, uh, which we know is a, is a project that'll happen for next year, um, as they're working on, on the diagrams now, um, and also the, uh, front vestibule, uh, you know, we're still working on those as well. Those were late to come on in, uh, we were expecting them a little bit earlier, uh, to be able to complete that work this summer, uh, so, but it looks like that'll be something, originally Paul was hoping to get that done during December, uh, but with the people that he was looking to contract with, that, they said it needs longer than a week to do it really in justice, so, uh, it'll be a little bit longer than that, so it'll probably be another summertime project for next year. Um, the gym, uh, as, as most of you guys saw, coming in, uh, has been patched, ceiling's been patched, it's been painted, a wall's been painted, and at this point, the electric panels are in, uh, floors will be done next, sanded down, uh, redone, uh, and again, we're, we're still looking at a final completion date of that, uh, somewhere around, um, mid-November. Hopefully sooner, but, no, hopefully, hopefully no later, but in time for winter sports. All right, um, Mr. Harper, do you want to talk about the, uh, ag?
I can briefly, yeah. Uh, last week, uh, on Tuesday the 7th, we had a visit from probably seven representatives from the Agency of Education and the Career and Technical Education Department from the state of Vermont, uh, included Secretary of Agriculture, Nancy Tebbetts, and a number of other people, including the number structures as well. And they are in the process of touring, um, all of, all 12 of the career and technical centers in our area, that would be Cold Hollow, up in Ennisburg in Northwest, down in St. Albans, as well as any of the other, um, programs in the state of Vermont, such as MVU, that have career and technical, uh, education opportunities. They were here probably for about 75 minutes, Jim Meishi, uh, did, did the tour, uh, Paul and I were able to go over and visit as well, Richard was able to come and join us, and, uh, thought it was a pretty positive meeting, um, Jim pressed him on a few questions, as you could well imagine he would have, uh, they didn't have any solid answers for him, but would go back to Montpelier and investigate. One of the big questions was, um, because we are a seven through 12, and we probably have 200 students in grade seven and eight go through a pre-tech program here at MVU through the career and, um, exploratory program, uh, why there was no financial reimbursement to MVU for that, because career and technical education programs are eligible for state reimbursement. So that gave them a little bit of a homework assignment when they went back, we'll continue to press them a little bit to see when and if they come up with answers. Richard, I don't know if there's anything else, uh, Richard got his picture taken, I'll say that.
Yeah, he needed that. No, I, you know, and I, I think they're big interested in, uh, the length of classes, you know, a lot of them felt that we should have longer classes over there, and, um, that was a, a talk, you know, but, uh, you know, other than that, it was, they were in, their biggest thing they wanted to see was the donkey.
Now, was Stephola, who's in charge of career technical, he'd been here once before, when he was up in Northwest, when we were, you know, at the meeting, was he part of the team?
Who were you looking for?
I can't think of.
Doug Weber was here, I know that.
He's a guy that's been here about a year.
It was not Jay Ramsey, Jay was not here, no, and I'm trying to think who the gentleman was that came last spring, uh, when we had a meeting, but, no.
Because they were, I mean, a year ago, they were quite interested in our program and seeing us grow our program. Hopefully they'll be partners in doing that, so, eager to see what they come back with from.
Who was the lady that was doing all the?
Well, there were a couple of them.
Longer hair.
Yeah.
She seemed.
The name escaped me, I tried to go back through the state directory.
I got it in my wallet, buddy.
But it, it was a good visit, positive visit, uh, mostly for them to see what we offer and, and what our students, um, have available to them to take, both in the middle school as well as in the high school, uh, program. I don't know whether or not we're going to receive a report from them that might indicate, you know, commendations or recommendations from the state, although as Richard said, they certainly did have questions, and they're the same questions we've had, uh, previous board meetings and, uh, conversation through the ag advisory board council, um, you know, how do you squeeze more time in to the ag program and still meet your other requirements that we have to have, courtesy of the state?
I think we should have a report, I don't know if truly want, or somebody wants follow-up, I mean, real, if they're coming out here, they work for the state, and they take their time, we should get a written report.
I agree. We can contact them.
Well, positive, as long as it's positive.
Either way.
They enjoyed, they enjoyed their visit, there's no question about it.
Well, usually the reports over the years, they have commendations and recommendations, and I'll take the recommendation.
Okay.
Just beyond that, though, oh, go ahead.
Here, this is one of the ladies, she wanted to be Jess.
Good, I'll take it.
You got an email, great.
Thank you, sir.
You get that a lot, Richard?
What's happening?
You get that a lot?
She slipped you.
Women giving their, their number?
Don't worry about it.
I hope Richard wasn't wearing that shirt and took his photo, because it's gonna appear on a poster or something.
Yeah, it was not.
That's good, Richard.
He took a good picture, I'm proud of him.
And, uh, just, uh, as a follow-up, we had all new teachers, staff in today, um, went through that tour of the building, got to meet their mentors, got to meet their department leaders, uh, today. Tomorrow, they participate in a district in-service, uh, they'll learn the evaluation method and all that, and, uh, all new, all new teachers and staff, all teachers and staff, actually, um, start next Tuesday. So, live and welcome back practice, anybody that's walking to a tent, please join us. Yeah, by all means. It's close to 8 o'clock.
What, who?
Tuesday. Tuesday.
Tuesday morning, 8 o'clock.
Yep, 10 o'clock.
So those that were here today, you expected me back?
Yes, yeah, we got no indication that anybody.
You were nice to.
We didn't scare them off today. They had a lot of information, it was a glazed overlook, but they got a lot of information, yeah.
Superb, all right, any questions for our principals? Thank you very much, and we're looking forward to a great start of the year coming up. So I can just read the superintendent's report.
So I, it's a fairly thin report, some of it was the same as last month, and I'm trying to do one per month, and my format in the future, um, is that we're going to have some report outs from the different sort of departments of, uh, central office, so there'll be a curriculum update and see what, the coach and the coaches and the teachers, PD that's been happening, special education, finance, well, you get a separate financial report, but if there's any particular project that's occurring, we would have that. So, um, and, and of course legislative updates and things like that as they come up. Um, the, the big news that I have as far as the state is around, the appointment of the Secretary of Education, who's Dan French, um, and, um, we're pleased that we're going to have a Vermont educator and longtime educational leader, uh, and former superintendent of the year. Um, he was the superintendent of the Bennington-Rutland Supervisory Union, so he understands supervisory union governance and Vermont, the pressures on Vermont education, so I think that's positive for Vermont schools. And, you know, we had an Act 46 discussion at the SU, and we had an Act 46 meeting on Monday, um, I, we discussed the outcomes of the Newark meeting and the fact that, I think at this point, all of the schools are investigating their options, and at the same time, we are investigating how we can prepare, um, if we need to have a study committee, a different kind of committee, for preparation. And that was pretty much where we're at, I think, next month, each board will have further discussions on that and actions that we'll be looking at.
Is there still a deadline, when we start Act 46, is there?
The state board is still, it's, uh, it, they've said October, it was going to be November, then they moved it up to the end of October, there's conversation about the middle of October, um, I have some marching orders from last night of contacts I need to make and, and some follow-up, and we'll be going from there.
So, yeah. Hmm. Um, here we go, is that?
That's, really, unless anyone has any particular questions, um, you know, working through issues like the website conversation, and, uh, that's come up in a couple of places, um, I just sent a quick email to, uh, our tech director to make sure that that, to give him a prompt on that, um, and we're working through those kinds of issues and being told that the phone still has the former superintendent, you know, we'll fix, we'll fix it all.
Appreciate that, any, any questions for Julie?
I have a question, because I was here Monday night on Act, or Tuesday night, Act 46, and then I read today's paper, and it's all about the Albert Sheldon, uh, and Albert does send students here, Sheldon sends a few students here. Is what I read in the paper accurate, that there is going to be continued discussion?
There are discussions, we had one meeting, um, it was not.
I knew about that one, but I, but if you read today's messenger, it looks like some serious discussions happened last night, I'm just curious, as an Act 46 committee member, is there a plan to move forward, that discussion further?
That will be up for the Sheldon board to decide, there are a number of challenges that could occur, I mean, there's no time for the communities to vote, and it really has to do, and that's one of the things I need to do, is check with the state to see how seriously they're taking, um, Albert's desire to withdraw from their, um, supervisory union, and they, as they did have a, a formally, a formal, uh, vote to merge. So. So Sheldon is interested in meeting its goals of staying in RSU and keeping its choice. And so we need to know how serious that possibility is before they expend too much energy in that direction. I think that pretty much covered the topic yesterday.
Yeah, I think geographically, it makes, makes sense that they're being, they're being forced to merge with some other KLS schools.
Social, the...
That, that works well, yeah. So, so I think that's where the idea came from. And, you know, we had a reporter here last night, and the conversation, I wouldn't say that was the focus of the conversation, but that was, that's what caught his eye, I guess.
All right, no.
Yeah, I had a question for administrators. Last few meetings, we've had a discussion about the science program. And I don't know if there's anything that's new, if there's been any follow-up. I noticed we don't have a lot of people here to talk about science. So is that, is that a positive sign?
So I, I did get an email from Jen just a little while ago. Said they moved one section of CP Earth and Space to the fall and added a ninth grade section of CP Bio in the spring. And if interested students and parents should contact their student guidance counselor if they want to go into those sections. So we have added some sections.
Figured you weren't going to forget about it.
And in order on, so that topic came up last Tuesday, too, of, of having an Ag science. And the conversation of bringing back the Ag science part of your, as freshmen, your Ag Earth and, well, you had Bio, or whatever you have. That, that came up. They thought that was a good idea, that that, freshmen should have an opportunity go for that.
We'll continue to investigate that. I mean, obviously, you know, anything that we do has got to be, has got to meet the approval of the district, but also at the same time, making sure that we meet state requirements as well.
Right. And, and, and it might be looking, like they said, maybe we need to look into getting a certified teacher over there, an Ag teacher over there, you know? And...
No question about it.
So I just have one question with the, with the addition of the CP, the CP Bio and the Earth and Science, the Earth and Space. What are, how are our parents going to be contacted in like the welcome, like, I just don't know how kids and parents are going to know that that's an option for them.
I, I do know that previously, I know Jen had composed and a letter was sent to all, to all parents informing them of some of the changes that we were making.
In the spring, right, yeah.
Yeah, well, the spring, early summer. I don't know if we've gone that far this time, but we can certainly, we'll have that conversation with her to see how best to get the word.
I just don't, because it could backfire, too. It could be like this huge flood of, there's too many, you know what I mean? Then it's a first cut, so there's...
Well, one, one of the issues that we're going to run into, and I'll, and I'll just bring that to your attention right now, is obviously, the master schedule has been built back in late April, the beginning of May. Students have registered for their classes, they've been assigned and so forth. These sections that Dan is talking about and bringing to your attention are put into the schedule where they can fit the school.
So they may not be available to everybody then, Jim?
Not every student may find it available this year, based upon where they're located in the schedule. And like anything else that we offer, you know, especially in the elective programs, you know, sometimes you have to make those choices as to where you're going to go. As we look ahead, building for the nineteen-twenty school year, which will start doing in October, you know, we'll be, we'll be more ahead of the game, so we'll have those sections. We won't have the sections built in, but we'll have the course offering built in, so students can actually sign up for them as something that they want initially, as opposed to trying to fit it in after the fact.
And it's all dependent upon availability of staff as well. And in this situation, I think we had a couple of staff who had a little bit of available time in their schedule, whether they left a duty or, you know, like a study hall duty or something to that effect, to be able to fit this into their schedule. So next year, we'll be able to plan a little bit better for the number, but as Mr. Hartman said, the number of sections.
Do you think there'd be software that triggered all of this out? Like you plug it all in and spits out, you know, based on, you know? I don't, is there software for everything?
Yeah, our software guru sits next door to me. And, and I will tell you, Eric, from experience, because of the number of constraints that we have in our, in our school, the fact that Dan and I are competing for the same teachers in the same classrooms and the same students, just being one, I think we're up to about fourteen constraints now. When we did kind of what you're, what you're thinking of, we found out that we were able to schedule forty-seven percent of our students. And right now, with Lori doing it and kind of schmoozing the system, we're able to get up to between eighty-five and ninety. And in turn, and when I say schedule the students, that means getting eighty-five percent of the students all of the classes that they had indicated they wanted to take. You know, those electronic programs are great if you don't have any unique circumstances to your school. And we have a few of them.
If it was only a high school, it would be...
It would be. But, but Dan's indicating he doesn't want to leave yet. And I don't want to get rid of him.
Well, having scheduled a high school, why do you put the middle school in? And you're still a junior high, that's...
Among other things.
That's a, well, okay.
With shared staff, it makes it incredibly difficult.
Sure.
All right. So we have one new business. Meeting dates. Looks like our next Franklin Northwest meeting will be September fifth, back at MBU. And then our next MBU meeting will be September twentieth, right here at seven o'clock. We do have an executive session item that we want to discuss. So I guess unless there's some other open sessions, go ahead, Richard.
Couple things. First thing is the fact, is there, is there something we can do to, at one end, where them four-wheelers come around, can we do something about a fence, so they, they can not track up? You know, just go down, you know? So they, they have to go, something we could start anyways, to try to keep them off that northern, that north end?
I think it's something, thinking like they'd have sections going like that, so that they'd have to detour, they'd have to go out of the way to...
Yeah, you know, they're gonna go right by there. If there was something we could go around, because that stuff is gonna fly and it's nice and loose right now. You get a four-wheeler on there, that baby's gonna, they're gonna put on shoulders for their friends.
You gotta try to protect it.
Just by design, it's gonna draw trouble. Just because it's a track.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's got the word "track."
Dennis?
Yes, Jim?
So what I think you're trying to say is like from the field fence, the Ag field, from that fence across the path to like my property line?
Yes.
So that's just a short section?
Right.
And what can that be, a hundred feet?
That'd be probably not true.
You're talking about right from the...
You know, the Ag science field, the Christmas trees and stuff, it's already fenced in?
Yeah.
If you ran a fence from the corner closest to the ditch?
Yeah.
Over across to my property line, across the path? That would deter them coming through the path. And like Richard said, they'd have to look for another way around.
I, I was thinking more, once you come out of the woods there, around the track or something, start going around the track, down by the woods.
Until you get to the other set of woods, right?
Yeah, till you, you know, try to, you know, eventually, I'd like to see it come right down, down around softball and back up there, but maybe that's a dream, but, you know? That, that would be our ideal. But if we could start something to offset them, I don't know what we got, if...
I don't know if there's any kind of temporary fence. That way, if we do in the future decide to, to go more around the perimeter, then we haven't wasted, I mean, it's all, it all can be pulled up, I guess.
That's what I say, if you could start a fence, then you could continue it and continue and continue it throughout the years. So if you started one on this end, and maybe one on that end with gates, you know, where the four-wheelers come through, and then slowly, like Richard says, start enclosing fields. Because I mentioned that to Lumsley once, why not surround the track?
Right. Unless it's got to take them down.
You know, surround the track and close the track in, and it's a separate venue. Because I think around the track, wouldn't it be as long as you were proposing to do the whole?
Right, right.
Property line?
We, we were out there the other day, and once your track is finished, you're gonna have to enclose it. You don't have an option. If, if you don't, then all the money that's been invested and all the time that's gone into it, you know, it'll be gone in a matter of a couple of years, I'm sure. That's a good possibility, I, you know, to go right across. I, I think if I'm hearing you correctly, Jim, to go right across the north end of the, to go right across the north end from one set of woods to the other set of woods. I think if you try to do anything less than that, you're, you're probably gonna be inviting them to find another way into it.
You're saying right on the corner of Mark's land lab, right?
Yes, to my favorite corner, right where the path comes through?
Yeah.
Where you guys put the gate, put a fence from Mark's corner, the furthest, closest corner to the ball field, not the back corner, because that'd be, you're adding another fifty feet or more.
But if we're, help me out here in terms of my directions, are you talking above the track?
I'm up by the ball field.
Out by the baseball diamond, so how do you...
That was, that's where they enter.
Right.
Right.
One entrance.
Right.
They enter there and they enter the gate you use for graduation. That's where they come in, in those two locations. So if you fenced that one, either they gotta trespass on my land to go around the fence, which is, or they gotta go all the way down around the land lab.
Can you translate that for us?
Or they gotta go all the way around the land lab and down around that section by the softball field, the first field, the softball field, right? When you first come into the parking lot?
I'd like to suggest that we ask the athletic director to the next board meeting, if he can give us some options and costs. And if Richard or anybody, our member wants to be involved, I guess that's up to administration. But, you know, I think that John should be seeing the big picture, and if he can get some suggestions on our options, how much, they'll deal with it.
I think that if somebody can meet with him, just to say, this is what I'm thinking, this fence on here.
Okay.
Are they done?
And just, you know, to help him, these guys...
Rather than just saying, work that whole thing, just...
Are these guys done working out?
Yes, he is, he is finished for this year.
Yesterday, yeah.
So...
I mean, obviously, if, if you decided to put a fence on the north end of where the track is right now, and just basically created that channel, I guess, for, for lack of a better term, you would want it to be done in such a way that as you, that eventually, it would become part of a bigger...
Right.
Right.
Wraparound.
Right.
For the, for the entire track, I would think. Because what could potentially happen is they would come in from the west side, come up through by the pit, come across your field, hot and field, which is not desirable either, and then go onto the track, spin around it a few times, and then come back the other way. And, and, you know, and potentially take out two or three fields in addition to your track.
Right.
You know, I'm willing to be part of it. I'm willing to meet with him, Richard. Anybody else? If he gives us some...
I mean, we, we certainly have a, a firm that we've worked with in the past. They've put up all of the protective fences and screens that we have. They have put up all of our backstops on both the baseball and softball fields. They've repaired the main fence on multiple occasions that runs along by the game soccer field and the driveway leading out to the, to the athletic fields. He could give us a quote pretty quickly, I'm, I'm pretty sure of that. And he might already have some numbers, because we've actually asked him to do that on a couple of different occasions. The only thing that would change is value of the price.
I think we'd certainly want to get Paul Gregor involved as well.
Oh, I would, I'm not trying to...
I know we were, we had this discussion.
Only that up to you guys, who maybe wants to...
This discussion's been had before.
And we couldn't come up with a starting point, ending point, so we didn't...
But whatever we do needs to be built in such a way that we can build upon it and add to it, not remove it and start over.
That's right. That's right.
Right.
Still think maybe some do not drive over here signs should be good enough.
Yeah.
Think that should work, but...
But I have a little side, there are twenty-five minefields out here. You guess where they are?
I think they're lying in there.
It's all right.
That could have a whole other smooth problem.
They'll lie a lot, a lot of London church balls.
I go another thing, Dennis.
Go ahead, Richard.
I think I, theater, theater seats. I'm getting a lot of harassment over that. Is there, is there any, has anybody talked to Paul or anything, so?
You and I, you and I talked on Tuesday morning of last week, and by Tuesday afternoon, we had started that conversation. Yep. So you keep voting yes, and we'll keep finding chairs for you.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, we talked about when we did the floor. We talked about changing them, and if I remember right, we couldn't get them in time and...
The, the chairs that are, those very comfortable chairs that you all enjoy so much in the theater are no longer available, so you can be thankful of that. The other piece, however, is finding something that is going to be comfortable, that probably is not going to be traditional theater seating like you would find at the Flynn or even at an unnamed school to the south of us. And would be durable, because unlike a lot of other schools, we don't have a door that we can lock and keep people out of there. And that may be the biggest issue, because like the rest of our building, first and foremost, it's round, so good luck putting a row of seats in there. And secondly, it is used every day, starting at seven-thirty in the morning.
Sometimes even early.
And sometimes earlier. Quality and durability, it would be key.
Some of that seating must be original.
Yes. I would say probably three hundred of the seats are still original.
How many does it hold?
Five hundred.
Approximately five fifty, five and a half, yeah.
Paul had some preliminary numbers on chairs, and we can discuss.
I'm sure he has an idea of what he's thinking and...
Yep, and what the replacement cost would be.
I know it's not cheap.
Well, I haven't been in there for a while, and I don't know how rickety they are, some of them, but is there any...
You said they're loose, right?
Some are. So when they redid the floors, when they did the floors a couple of years ago, they had to take them all out. And of course, when you take them on out and try to put them right back in, they don't always all fit as they had. It took quite a bit of effort to get them out, some of them, because the bolts hadn't been moved in, how many years, Mr. Hartman? A lot.
That time, about forty-four.
So, you know, to put them back on, you know, there, there's almost a complete row at the top that couldn't go back in. And there are some that are, are...
Because we talked about it when we did the floor, and in, at the time, we didn't think there was enough money or something, and we were putting the floor down, but...
Just chairs alone, I, I think it's, it's close to, the number I think I heard was, was a hundred and seventy-five. Per sheet, per...
No.
Section?
Hundred and seventy-five?
Per chair.
Okay, yeah.
Yep. By five hundred and fifty.
That's a lot, Richard.
And it's, you know, it's, it's, yeah.
That's why I love tales of that.
You can make that motion anytime you want, Richard. I'll take care of the details.
It, it's going to be another project, no question about it, and, and it needs to be done. When we get something that we think, you know, the more we'll, we'll like, we'll come deal with it.
It would be a great project to add into the bond, but we maxed that out. We really want, I mean, looking back, we could have tried for more, but we had a couple of them. Looking back, we could have tried for more, but we had a couple left.
It's just sitting here thinking, Richard and I pushed pretty hard to get that number up where it is.
Yeah, right.
I didn't see a lot of enthusiasm around the table for pushing it much higher.
I know we all have so much time, but I know that Broadway has offered grants in the past to redo high school theaters, like millions of dollars. So, it's just, I don't know if there's a musical parent that feels like taking that task on or, you know?
Yeah, all sorts of avenues.
That's a good point. And also, like, like they did down at the Centennial Field with the wooden seats, you could buy them and, I mean, whatever, I mean, I guess it costs, I don't know, you know how much it is? You could buy those old seats.
I don't know, I wasn't interested in buying a Nazi.
Yeah, me neither, but.
But Ben would do that, too.
The old ones from Yankee Stadium are seven hundred and fifty bucks each.
Yeah.
You could probably get-
Ask your wife how many she wants.
They should have told students they could carve their names in them and then track them down and sell them.
We could store them in Dennis's barn with bleachers.
As the bleacher wood comes out, there'll be room for something.
Like, like your bleachers, those chairs don't owe you anything.
No, for sure.
That's for sure.
All right. Any else, Richard? Thank you for bringing those up. I slipped my mind. All right, I guess at this point, if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to enter as I could-
Oh, I do have something else.
We talked about this.
What's the, I, I, I see Ron over there, and what's the going on with the ag building that's far as, different, you know, she takes care of the animals, but is there anything that stipends or anything else for the other stuff that goes on, like the sugar in, the, you know? I, I, I still, I still got to believe, you know, when you get a couple of teachers that spend all, all weekend long at field days promoting their thing, I think there should be a stipend somewhere, you know, and, and, you know, and they work to get it together. It's just like last Tuesday, Jimmy was here, made sure he had everything opened up, you know? I think there needs to be some kind of stipend for the teachers, you know, and maybe they would, you know, we have this discussion, but, you know, Ronna takes care of the animals, but she doesn't do the, you know, should there be, you know, would it, if there was a stipend, would it, in February, because sugar is getting, you know, they got lines and, and vacuum and all that here, it's earlier, it comes during February vacation. If there was a stipend, would it keep a teacher around? You know, I, you know, could it be treated like a varsity sport or, you know, the same kind of, you know, that, that's one of the biggest things, and, and I know they say union and all this, but could it be done like a, like a varsity sport, Dennis? That's one of my, you know, and, and where do we go with this, you know? Don, maybe you've got some ideas, you know, you know? And I know, you know?
Well, I thought we went and put together a number in the budget, we said that didn't have to go all to one person, we could break that up. So, is that money already all obligated?
Well, I, I don't, I don't know where it's, it's gone, you know? I, I, I don't, I know they pay Ronna, but I don't know where the other, you know, I guess I'm looking for a follow-up, Don.
So, let's find out how much money we put in and how much money we've committed and if we got any left, what we can do with it.
Because I don't think there's, there's ever been a, a, a plan, you know? I don't, you know, I, I don't think there's ever been a set plan of what we were going to do with that.
I know, we talked about sugar and being separate, because we said probably the person who owned the sugar had no interest in any of the other stuff, because they're into sugar. So, let's get the numbers of how much money we had and how much money's been committed.
This is for the ag activities and coordinators.
Right, absolutely. And we put in, I don't know, maybe fifteen thousand?
Yeah, fourteen, fourteen or fifteen, yeah.
I didn't think it was that.
I thought it was.
Yeah, it wasn't that much.
So, let's find out from our business manager or somebody, how much we have and how much we've committed and all from there.
We can bring those back to you in September.
Yeah, be good.
Yeah, have a good year.
All right. Well, I shut everybody off. Still early.
That's okay.
It's all right.
All right.
We'll make up for it in September.
Last time I take you for a ride, this one was a curveball.
I'll entertain a motion to enter executive session for a legal issue. So moved. Motion by Greg.
Second.
Second by Richard. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, twice habit, executive session at eight oh five.